So I will. Is every, okay. Call this meeting to order or are we recording?
Not yet, so I just promoted you so you can go ahead and start the.
Okay. Okay. One, two, three, great. Okay, we are live, so welcome everyone to the October 20th Cupertino City Council Meeting. Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chow.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sinks.
Yes.
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here. Great, so before we get started, I want to give a report out from our closed session which just concluded. The meeting today was a conference with legal counsel pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, existing litigation Valco Property Owner LLC versus City of Cupertino, Santa Clara County Superior Court Case Number 19CB355457, 2019. With prejudice to city and litigation, no reportable action was taken. Councilmember Chow recused herself out of an abundance of caution due to the location of her property. So, thank you, and we are on to ceremonial matters and presentations. So, we have a proclamation recognizing Anika Palapatu for being a finalist in the nation's premier STEM competition for middle school students. So, are you here now? Let's see. Let me go to participants. Attendees.
Mr. Mayor, can you see that I'm sharing my screen? Just want to check.
Uh, yeah. Uh, I just want to let Anika in. Anika, are you here?
I'm here.
Wonderful, so I will read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Cupertino wishes to recognize resident Anika, and please pronounce your last name for me.
Palapatu.
Palapatu on being named a top 30 finalist in the 2020 Broadcom Masters, a nationwide competition for middle schoolers in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics STEM. And whereas as a 7th grader at the Harker School, Anika competed against over 3,000 students in this rigorous virtual competition that leverages project-based learning to test and demonstrate mastery of 21st century skills of critical thinking, creativity, communication, and collaboration in each of the STEM areas. And whereas for her project, Anika designed an artificial intelligence program to spot an eye disease called diabetic retinopathy, which is the leading cause of blindness. And whereas Anika's program uses images of the retina to tell whether the eye disease is present as well as the severity of the disease, with Anika reporting an accuracy rate of 95%. And whereas the City of Cupertino commends Anika's achievement in utilizing her knowledge in STEM and her contributions to the community, therefore, I, Mayor Steven Scharf, and the Cupertino City Council do hereby congratulate Anika Palapatu for her accomplishment and encourage Anika to continue developing STEM skills and bringing her ideas to life. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Cupertino to be affixed this Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. Signed, Steven Scharf, Mayor. So, Anika, would you like to speak at all?
Yes, I, I will.
Great.
First of all, I just want to thank you, Honorable Mayor and respected council members. I sincerely appreciate and thank you all for recognizing me this evening. I thoroughly enjoyed working on this project because it gave me a new perspective on how technology and science could help the society not only in the United States but across the globe. So, thank you again, Honorable Mayor and respected council members.
So, congratulations. Would any of the other council members like to speak? On this?
I, I would just echo my congratulations and good luck on a, what will no doubt be a fantastic career.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Great, okay. So, we will move on now to postponements. Madam City Clerk, are there any postponements?
No postponements, Mr. Mayor.
Great, so we will move on to oral communications. Let me go to attendees, so you will get three minutes each. I see one person with their hand raised. Welcome, Rhoda Frye. Unmute you, I think you need to unmute yourself as well. Okay, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf and council members. Today, the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors had a agenda item pertaining to oversight of Stevens Creek Quarry. Joe Smidian and his staff had asked for review of the Department of Planning and Development's oversight, oversight, and the audit showed, perhaps to nobody's surprise, that some aspects of the quarry, the quarry regulation has in fact never been done by the planning department. The plan department will be reporting back to the Housing, Land Use, Environment, and Transportation, that's a mouthful, committee in December to show what, what changes they've made. Frankly, I'm, I'm somewhat bullish that, with the deft leadership of Director Jacqueline Nociano, who hails from Monterey, where they had zero tolerance for non-compliance. Nevertheless, I want to quickly relay a story from the April 25, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, where I had noticed that a form that had been sent to the state mining, no, it was not state mining, sorry about that, the Division of Mining Reclamation, there's just too many, too many places in the, in the, in the state. But anyway, they, the county submitted a document to the state and it said that the quarry was in compliance when in fact it was not. I mentioned it at the planning commission meeting and how important it was because the state maintains administrative record. Nevertheless, Planner Rob Eastwood refused to correct the form and refused to resubmit it. And, and the report didn't go into the details of that, but they did say how some of the agenda items had been incomplete, and that was one of them. At that very meeting, my comment left the staff scrambling to wonder what document I was talking about. But really, the issues of the quarry regulation go by far deeper than that, and, and, and it is worrisome, although I think that we can all be happy that Supervisor Smidian and his staff are taking action to, to look at improving the county's oversight of our, of the quarries that are within our, our sphere of influence. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Rhoda, that was a great report. I don't see anyone else with their hand raised, there's only two attendees. So, for oral, Galaxy Tab A, 8-inch, 2019, I guess they are not raising their hand to talk. Okay. Therefore, we will move on to reports by council and staff, and first we have our City Manager update on emergency response efforts. Welcome, Deb.
Thank you. I'll try to keep my report as brief as possible, but there's some.
You always say that.
I know, but it's getting longer and longer because I'm getting requests for more information, so. I'll cut to the chase, COVID-19. As of this week, there's 378 deaths in the county due to COVID. There's a seven-day rolling average of new cases that currently stands at about a little over 100, so about 103 per day. Based on the most recent seven days with full testing data, there have been an average of almost over 7,500 tests, which is huge progress for the county. When we all started this, they could barely get to 4,000, so that's really good. With an average positivity rate of 1.56% and dropping, so also, I point these two things out because they are part of the metrics they use in order to move to different tiers of the, the health order that's put out by the state. Here in Cupertino, we are unfortunately now up to 135 cases, although it's not the little surge we saw a couple of weeks ago. Definitely increase of four cases since last week. The next scheduled testing by appointment opportunity is tomorrow, October 21st, from 9:30 to 9:40, 3:45, with plenty of appointments available. Also, you can walk in, and again, it's at the senior center. However, it's not just for seniors, anybody can go. First-line essential workers are always encouraged to get tested about once a month. So, again, if you have no appointment, that's okay, walk in, just wanted to get people tested. There is a new health order that I talked about last week, or last council meeting that I thought I would repeat, the two exceptions. Indoor dining and indoor gatherings are being held to the red tier versus the orange. And all that means is that for indoor dining and indoor gatherings like church or restaurants or other events like that, it's at 25% of the fire occupancy or 100 people, whichever is less. Outdoor gatherings can be 200 or less, and of course, with all the health precautions in place, physical distancing, face coverings, hand washing, et cetera. To go into a little bit of our events for the city under COVID, of course, tennis and golf remain as our high-use activities during this time along with some of our free online classes. Want to repeat some of the events. Hidden Treasures is going to be a virtual succulent fundraiser from October 26th through October 30th, so next week. McLoughlin Ranch Park. Outdoor lecture series this month will include night sky, skulls, and snakes. And classes at the blacksmith shop will resume in November, so a couple more weeks. I was asked to also repeat some of the things we're doing for Halloween and then some of the other guidance should people want to do some neighborhood things. For Halloween, the city is following the county guidance with activities in the lower-risk category. Basically, stay at home and keep it small. So, because we're encouraging that, we are, we have the Halloween Spooktacular giveaway, hashtag Cupertino Cares, giving away Halloween buckets for kids. All 1,500 have been registered for, which is good news. Drive-in movie, The Hotel Transylvania, will be shown October 30th and 31st, Friday and Saturday at 6:00 PM in the BlackBerry Farm parking lot, and that's also sold out through pre-registration. Also, if you go to our website, you'll be able to see all of this, including the curbside pickup appointments for your Spooktacular giveaway. The Halloween guidance I was asked to read was for anybody interested in doing something in your neighborhood, participating in one-way trick-or-treating, where individually wrapped goodie bags are lined up for families to grab and go, or individual bowls are put out with people taking candy without being direct contact, and continued, continuing to physically distance such as the, at the end of a driveway or the edge of a yard. I'm not going to read all of this because it will be, it's being pushed out in our COVID update tomorrow, and will be posted to our website just after that. Just remember to follow the normal protocol of washing your hands and, in water for 20 seconds, soap and water for 20 seconds, wearing appropriate face coverings, socially distancing, bringing hand sanitizer with you should you be in a trick-or-treating situation. And that's, that's for Halloween. Fortunately, we didn't have any, too bad of inclement weather this week or air quality problems. Most of the PSPS events from last week did not affect Cupertino, and this week's PSPS essentially is affecting the northeast portion of the county, so near Milpitas and a little bit north. Air quality is basically back to normal. A little bit about our homeless encampments. There hasn't been much change since the last council meeting, however, in the last two weeks outreach to the encampments has continued. In my last report from October 6th, I reported that it appeared as if there was abandoned property north of 280. And through our outreach, we determined that it was not abandoned, but that the encampment members to the north did participate in some extra cleanup of debris with coordination with the sheriff. This week, I will be meeting with agencies and nonprofits involved to fully understand the housing offer in our commitment to obtaining a pathway to housing for all members of the encampment. Once I have firm details, I will update the city and council, city council and interested members of the public. Lastly, there's been some confusion about the ballot boxes generally out here and some concern about that, so I would reiterate a couple of things. The Cupertino ballot boxes are being collected, the ballots are being collected daily by the registrar of voters from October 19th through November 3rd. Cupertino City Hall has two boxes, and there was some confusion, right, there was some confusion because earlier last week or earlier this week, one ballot box, a new one that we had requested for just in case there were overflow, was placed right next to one that had already been placed there a week and a half ago, and they looked very different. I assure everybody that they're both legitimate ballot boxes placed there by the registrar of voters, even though they look different. And what we've done is we've kept the one that is to the side, near the bigger parking lot, next to the Rodriguez entrance at City Hall, and then the other one has been placed at the main entrance of City Hall, kind of facing the quad and in the picture. There's also a ballot box at Deonza College outside Registration and Student Services, and there's one at the Quinlan Community Center outside the front entrance at North Stelling Road. The Cupertino Vote Center locations are coming up. The hours will be, dates and hours will be October 31st to November 2nd. They'll be open from 9:00 to 5:00. November 3rd on Election Day, they'll be open from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. The Quinlan Community Center in the Cupertino Room is one voter center location. And the second one in Cupertino is at the Fremont Uni-High School District Adult School, classrooms 1 and 2, 101, 23, North Wolf Road. Suite 2085, again, this, this will be posted. Early voting at the registrar's, registrar of voters' office is also available at 1555 Burger Drive, Building 2 in San Jose. Hours are Monday through Friday, October 5th through November 2nd, 8:00 to 5:00. And then Saturday and Sunday, October 24th and 25th, October 31st and November 1st, 9:00 to 5:00. And then Election Day, 7:00 to 8:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So, that's the update I have to try and help eliminate some confusion and concern, and thanks for the time.
And Madam City Manager, I just wanted to add that these, all of these locations and dates and times are posted on the city's elections page.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so now we are on to reports on committee assignments. Let's see, Councilmember Chow, do you want to go first?
So, I just have the Housing Subcommittee, Housing Survey Subcommittee. I think maybe Councilmember Willie can report on that, he's mainly driving that.
Okay, all right, let's go to Councilmember, Councilmember Willie, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, yeah. So, the Housing Subcommittee, you know, I think is very clear that the Subcommittee, all four of us, really understand the importance of both informing the community and getting the community's input on what housing they support, where, what types, and all those things. So, we're working on the survey, it's in its initial stage of being prepared, and we're looking for early next year so that we can start to implement it. So, that takes care of that. I'd also bring up the League of Cities Conference, and I want to bring that up simply that it's, it's important to realize that all the communities are facing these housing issues and racial bias issues, and so we can learn together and hopefully come up with productive solutions going forward. So, so I thought that was pretty beneficial, that's it.
Okay, very good, Rod?
Thank you, Stephen. So, Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board Meeting, we had, we have now allocated, based on an earlier allotment and the budget of $5 million, to our local communities. We have allocated, based on a pro-rata share of power in each city, delivered by Silicon Valley Clean Energy, nearly $43,000 available for resilience planning in our city. We've also established first steps in a power prepay agreement for financial savings. This auto, this will give us the ability to leverage financial institutions to yield a $3 million savings when the timing is right to do so. We also took steps to join a super JPA, that is a JPA composed of community choice energy agencies in a, in a wide area. And that, we, we issued a joint RFO, a request for for study of up to 500 megawatts of major energy storage that could see us through on a resiliency basis. So, we, we expect that this super JPA will procure special projects that take more, Super J P A will procure special projects that take more. More oomph and more size and scope than any of us can could in. Our normal contracts, as you know, we've procured solar plus storage, wind and so forth and geothermal. But this is something which is a step beyond grid resilience, long duration storage. The state, we've received a lot of good press from this. With members of the legislature and others interested in securing our long term future. So that is my report.
Okay, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Sharp. So I only had one assigned committee meeting, that was the V T A Policy Advisory Committee. And I'll report out on two items from there if I can. Forgot to share my screen. Okay, this one is it. Alright, so this the second thing I wanted to share actually, since see if I can, okay. So we had a, can you guys hear me? I'm getting a.
Oh, yes.
Unstable. Notice here, so the PAC approved a recommendation to the V T A Board. And it basically had to do with the diminished budget. So they're modifying the Transportation Development Act Article three and Transportation Fund for Clean Air Funding. Relating to bicycle and pedestrian projects, it affects projects, you know, across the jurisdiction, but. You know, it does. You know, largely preserve a lot of the projects that are that are the most important. And then the other item that I wanted to point out to the community has to do with. I apologize for. Okay, has to do with something that is actually pretty impactful for everyone. And so I would encourage you, I just checked the website, it's still active, to go to this U R L. And give your input and feedback regarding the twenty twenty one Transit Service Plan. I had mentioned it two weeks ago at our prior meeting. And they're still taking feedback, they've had two meetings with the public, two virtual meetings. And at at issue are fundamentally three different diminished service plans. One's a ninety ninety percent plan, one's an eighty percent plan, and one's a seventy percent plan. And if you're interested in the routes and fiscal responsibility. As well as things like whether, you know, fifteen minute bus, you know, stops will go down Stevens Creek. I highly recommend that you take a look at this website. Let me see if I can switch my sharing to the site itself. And I do have that up as well, so so this is the site. And as you can see, there's seventy percent, eighty percent, ninety percent, as well as the ability to comment. And so it will have a very significant impact, it's not a minimal amount of dollars that are at stake here. But if if members of the community are are interested and have the time, I very much encourage you to visit this website. And give your input. Thanks very much.
So before I go to my report, what is happening with this proposal? To delay all other projects except BART because I'm a little confused. We talked about it at Cities Association, but it wasn't clear if it was actually coming. I seem to remember Rod, you saying it was going to bypass all of the committees and go straight.
If Roger's on, he could tell you directly.
Alright, great, Roger.
Got all my dope from Roger and well, and the staffer in Mountain View, so.
Alright, yeah, before I get my report, because I am not clear on it.
Alright, good evening, Mayor Council, Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. Yeah, I I had become aware that. There may be an effort to have have funding, measure B funding be delayed for projects for up to ten years to fund projects such as San Jose to Bart. I I am on an ad hoc committee with the V T A. Technical Advisory Committee to better understand what's going on there, and I was in a meeting last week on that. You know, I think what's happening is there's they're seeing the funding picture for the San Jose Bart line a little bit more clear. Revenues are starting to come in for measure B, although less than they were before. But you know, there's, I think it is challenging because the measure B language didn't have a priority to how projects would be funded and when.
Okay, alright, since this is not agendas, I don't want to talk about it anymore, but I appreciate that. So I will go to my report, so cities is.
If I can just kind of.
Okay, go.
And and it's good that we have Roger on because. The part that I didn't report out on, but I took notes on was the V T A's plan for the Bart Station area and future Dirdon Station. And the reason I didn't talk about it was that I wasn't certain what the details were. But what I'd written was that the eligible is eligible for an expedited delivery program for phase two. So you know, if if that makes sense to Roger, perhaps he'd.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was just concerned that this is committee reports and we're kind of talking about something not on the agenda.
Right, so this this was actually in my committee update.
Okay.
You know, if you'd like to just provide that update to the public, and if that means anything to you, Roger, please feel free to elaborate. I you know, I I don't know precisely what phase two is, which is why I didn't, you know, feel fit to 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 report it out to the public.
Okay, Roger, if you know what phase two is and can do it briefly, that'd be great.
I don't specifically, I know measure B limits Bart funding to twenty five percent, and they're they're getting close to that now and what they want to spend.
Okay. Okay, so.
Well, what I would say about it is I think Bart Phase Two is the project that goes from. You know, where Bart currently is, that was just turned out, that was Phase One, right, Darcy, if I remember right? So I think that's what it is, but the the threat is they would eliminate half of the road money. And every transfer, every every transit project would would. Be. Put on hold for ten years funding wise. Except for bike ped projects, yes, and half of the roadway money. So that's that's what I've gotten from various sources.
Okay, alright, so I will skip that part of the A bag meeting because I think we've gone through that. But so we had the legislative meeting, we voted not to take positions on any of the propositions. After a robust discussion, but most. Most people did not have direction from their city to take positions, so I think that was the right decision for. Sorry, Association of Area Government, no, Cities Association, sorry. But the big discussion was A bag and Rena and choosing which of the several options. That would be best for Santa Clara County. There was an effort by Contra Costa County to increase. The regional housing needs distribution for Santa Clara County to quite a larger percentage, and we're also actually already shouldering. More than our share, so that did go down to defeat. They adopted what's called eight point one, which is what the staff recommended. I want to thank. Vice Mayor Paul for calling into the meeting, I called in. Planning Commissioner Chair Kitty Moore called in. And Planning Commissioner Ray Wong called in, as well as one of our bike ped commissioners. I'm gonna find my. Notes from that. Okay, so it was it was a very robust discussion about Rena. And you know, A bag is kind of stuck with that number, they've got to distribute it somehow. So a lot of the speakers really should have been directing their comments to H C D. Because some of the allocations to certain cities were kind of kind of absurd, you know, a city with no land at all. For any more housing was being given these large numbers, it's, you know, obviously. It's not going to be possible them for them to build the actual housing. That number was. They came up with the distribution numbers without any thought of how COVID is going to change anything. Or how remote working is going to change anything, so. You know, we will get our number probably around six thousand units and we will have to create a housing element to deal with that. Just like the current housing element, you know, it may not, we may not find property owners will actually build it, but we are going to have to. Create that housing element. Let's see, I went attended the unhoused task force. No really, nothing really to report there, we're moving forward with plans of. Moving forward of plans of how to move forward and come to some some resolution and I'm sure there'll be a financial ask from the cities. I had the Saturday meeting with Cindy Chavez, again, we talked about COVID. We talked about the unhoused task force yet again. So. Oh, and flu shots, that was another topic we had on Saturday. And I'll repeat what I had here because apparently I just found that even people in City Hall don't know. If you do have Kaiser, and I know a lot of people do, you can get a flu shot at Rite Aid, C V S, Walgreens, Walmart. Safeway or Costco. At no cost if you're a Kaiser member, because Kaiser is not giving flu shots at their medical center this year. Let's see, I think that's all I have on my assignments. So I am done. So we can move on to the consent calendar, did anybody wish to pull anything from consent? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to pull the item with the key update. Interim budget and key update.
Number nine.
Okay, so you're gonna pull number nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to move items five through eight on the consent calendar.
Great, second, roll call vote.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Yes?
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, so we're to item nine, the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty one interim budget and key project update. So Madam City Manager, would you like to give a report?
We do have a short report, so I'll invite Zach Korach, our finance manager to talk through the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, Zach Korach, Finance Manager. I'll share my screen briefly here. Okay, and the proposed structure here is I'll go over a few of the interim budget related slides. And as for the key projects, I'll turn it over to Director Lee and then following Director Lee, we can turn it over to Director. Director Fu to cover the community development items. So to begin and to preface, as part of the fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty one adopted budget and the budget process. City staff had communicated to to the city council that any significant or material matters related to. Covid nineteen and specifically to the budget, we would be communicating with city council in a timely manner. We will still be bringing forth the the regular first quarter financial report. That will be on November seventeenth, it'll be a much more detailed and extensive financial report on the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty one. But what we've learned so far on the first quarter, we're seeing that sales tax for the city is up significantly. And this is primarily due to the transition to a work from home environment. The business to business or the B to B industry experienced significant growth in contracts throughout the state. Transitioning into that work from home environment, we're currently sitting at approximately fifty six percent of the total adopted budget for the fiscal year. Which is very positive, and that also represents a one hundred and nine percent increase over the first over fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty, the first quarter. Now, conversely, transient occupancy tax are commonly referred to as the hotel, excuse me, the hotel tax. Is suffering tremendously. Through the first quarter of the current fiscal year, the city has recognized three percent of the total amount that was budgeted. And that represents an eighty six percent decline over the same period in last fiscal year. One of the things to to note, an important takeaway is that although these are significant fluctuations in total. The increases and the unanticipated increases in sales tax far outweigh those declining figures for transient occupancy tax. So while there are increases and decreases in these two specific categories, we're not anticipating it affecting the bottom line for the entire fiscal year. As far as the fund balance, we do want to remind city council and members of the community that. As far as fiscal year two thousand nineteen, fund balance, excuse me, fiscal year nineteen twenty fund balance projections. And those have come in a little bit higher than originally anticipated at sixty five point five million dollars. Those are unaudited figures and subject to change, but I'm pretty reliable at this point in time. Included in that sixty five million dollars would be twenty eight point four million dollars in unassigned fund balance. As for the current projection on this current year's ending general fund fund balance. With those preliminary estimations or projections for revenues, predominantly the sales tax figures coming in higher than than anticipated. We'd be projecting an ending fund balance of seventy two million with thirty one point seven million and unassigned. And I'm referring to or emphasizing the unassigned fund balances because we do have a few options. And historically, city staff have brought recommendations to city council as part of the midyear financial report in March of of respective fiscal year. With recommendations to to authorize the the transfer or the use of that unassigned fund balance from the previous fiscal year. For various purposes, and so the three primary options that we're we're analyzing right now is one to retain the unassigned reserve balance. To absorb any potential future covid nineteen impacts. If, for example, if transient occupancy tax were to experience similar declines quarter over quarter. And as of right now, that that is a realistic projection, given the the shelter in place orders continuing. And and really the trends for the hotel tax not moving upwards. That there would be a significant need to absorb those impacts into for the remainder of the fiscal year. Option two would be similar to what we've done in years past is transferring an amount to the capital reserve. That again is for the purpose of funding future unfunded capital improvement program projects. And then lastly, a recommendation that would be considering. An increase to the current economic uncertainty reserve, which is still intact at nineteen million dollars. Or further increasing the pension reserve, the section one fifteen trust, which is currently at thirteen point five million dollars. Again, this is all preliminary information and an interim update, and we'll be bringing a detailed analysis and additional information as part of. First quarter and then midyear again during the month of March. So with that. This commences the the key project update, so I'll turn it over to Director Lee. And for Director Lee, we have about three or four slides, I think, related to the Public Works Department, and we can turn it over to Director Fu.
Thank you, Zach, Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. For the Rigart Creek Trail Project, plans are over ninety five percent complete and fence selections by the residents haven't finalized. We've received a permit, our permits for fish and wildlife, and we're waiting for one more permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, and that's expected by next month. There's been some delay in permits just because of COVID and the fires. And then previously, council had authorized the joint use agreement and land swap with Valley Water. And that is being considered by the by Valley Water Board yet yet this month. And so as long as the permits come in as we expect in November. And the board finalizes the joint use agreement, the project is going to be going out to bid and and as early as November of this year, next month. And it will be going to council for authorization of a ward of construction as early as January of next year. Go to the next slide. Okay, the Transit Center, this is related to what we talked about earlier. So at the first of October, V T A Board of Directors, they did accept the State Route eighty five corridor policy advisory board, the P A B. That Director Sinks is a director on recommendation for a transit line lane project on State Route eighty five. And to proceed with an alternative analysis, and so with this action, the long median transit lane will be further analyzed. B T A already has in their budget two and a half million dollars for initial project, initial project steps, including project definition, preliminary engineering and outreach. But the question is, is the timing of how B T A will allocate those three hundred and fifty million dollars of measure B funds. So many larger transport transit projects such as Bart to San Jose have the have the potential to significantly delay State Route eighty five project. So the the B T A P A B will provide continuing input into the analysis, future funding, and ultimately designing construction of this project. And as I mentioned, I'm going to be involved as well in the ad hoc committee attack. So let me go to the next slide, please. All right, and then the library expansion. As you know, the award to our DBE firm Rodan SVA was last August. We're very much in the design development right now. And the demolition of the existing structure of the children's reading room will occur as early as February. And that space is just being allocated into other areas into the library in conjunction with library staff. And then ultimately, completion for the project is scheduled for December of next year. So we're on schedule with that project. Next slide. And then lastly, Lawrence Midi, the property was acquired at the latter part of September. And we're coordinating with both San Jose and the local agency formation, LAFCO, for annexation into it. And as you know, the projects and improvements were previously funded through Apple Development Fees. And it's the plan to come at mid-year this year with a request to start a park specific plan, assuming we have the annexation in place. So that would conclude my report.
Okay, you can stop yours.
Well, I think Ben. I think Ben.
Okay. Sorry, Ben, okay.
Thank you, Roger. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, Ben Fu, Director of Community Developments. We have three items on this list. I'm sorry, I mean, am I coming okay? I was.
A little scratchy, but okay.
Apologize, I'll do my best. Okay, we do have three items on the lists. Although these items appear to be in a planned division, I will just remind council, we do have three divisions of housing building and con enforcement with housing having quite a few items as well. But the first one up is the gateway process. The gateway process, we brought to city council on a study session this past summer in July. And we received some input and direction from council. What's coming up next is we will be presenting to planning commission with the updated version and gather some information and input from planning commission before we finalize and bring back to city council for review and approval. Right now, we're estimating winter 2020, so a few months from now. Next on the list, we have the Velco engagement. This is no longer, next slide, please. Although it's no longer a project due to the upheld of the SB 35 project, we are providing updates on all building permit status on the website. And we're also working with our public information officer for more creative and additional outreach methods to notify the public of any permits that's been approved as well. Next slide is the objective standards. We, there's a list, if you recall, we have a list of amendments. We have evaluated those with the city manager and the city attorney's office. A few of those are also suggested by city council and planning commission as part of general plan amendments as well. So we are, we finalize our review of the entire list. We will be taking them sort of piece at a time to the city council, starting a few months from now in the winter of 2020. Thank you.
So for the general plan amendments, can we get some written updates now? That what your, what's the result of your evaluation? How you are planning to bring them forward?
Councilmember Chow, are you referring to the gateway process?
Objective standards. Objective standards.
Sure, we have.
There were a long list, there were level one, level two, and.
That's correct. So some of the level one items, we have implemented those and reviewed by council already. So we'll provide an update when we come back, just to kind of refresh your course. We also have a separate list of ones that we are currently working on, as well as a separate, a third list of items that we plan to be working on in the future, in the near future. So that will be coming to you pretty soon, in the next few months.
Yeah, I think it's been more than a year. If you can send an update of where you are with the different list.
Sure, we can certainly do that. We'll prepare, we'll prepare a memo through the city manager's office, and that's okay. Send it to council, absolutely, we'll do that.
And how about the Rancho Swimming Pool? Is that one of the project that will be updated in the next, in November? Or it?
That wouldn't be in the community development, so. I may need some help on either Roger or Joanne.
I don't know that the pool was part of the key projects or the top 10. It is, I know, going back to the Parks and Rec Commission after we do some more outreach. It just went to the Parks and Rec Commission. I forget the date, but it was recently.
I do believe that it will be part of the city work program update that comes in November.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll get the update.
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, very good. So can we have a motion for item nine now, unless there's more comments?
Just one quick question. You know, the Lawrence Midi is now, you know, we have been successful there. The question I have, just for an update, when we were considering it and there was a lot of leftover material that whose responsibility? Did the Caltrans decide to remove it all, or has it been left? Are we in good shape or?
Well, I believe we are in good shape, but the material is still there. But I'm not aware that it contains any hazardous materials that would cause issues in the future.
But it's going to be at our cost then to remove and dispose of everything?
I'm not aware of anything different than that, Councilman Willie, I could follow up, but I believe it is.
Yeah, I think it was like the gravel and stuff that they have that's loose there, that's there, they're going to take it. And then the berms that have vegetation over it, I don't think that they're committing to remove any of that. I think that's just, you know, that's ours, so to speak.
Okay.
I'm going to move item nine.
Yeah, thank you. I'll second.
Councilmember Chow?
Oh, aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, thank you very much, very appreciate the updates.
Okay, so there are no second readings of ordinances, are there? Kirsten?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we're on to public hearings, item 10. Consider municipal code amendments to Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 10.48, Community Noise Control to Regulate Leaf Blowers to Implement the Fiscal Year 2020, 2021 City Council Work Program Items Related to Ordinance Updates on Gas Powered Leaf Blowers, Application Number MCA 202002, and the applicants are city of Cupertino, citywide. Okay, so we start the public hearing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ben Fu, again, Director of Community Development. With us tonight, we have a couple staffers from the Planning Division. Presenting will be Jeff Samura, the project planner on the project, and then Planning Manager Pugos as well. With that, I will introduce Jeff Samura with a very brief presentation. I will remind the council that this item has been reviewed by planning commission back in September. Pretty similar presentation as well. Jeff?
Thank you, Ben. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. Jeff Samura, Associate Planner, Community Development Department. Trying to share my screen here. Great, can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I'll be discussing leaf floor regulations tonight. A little bit of background to begin. This item is part of the 2020, 2021 City Council Work Program Item. This came about as a result of growing noise concerns from residents. And the intent of the item is to adopt leaf floor regulations similar to those of neighboring jurisdictions. Current regulations, there's no ban or noise standard specific to leaf floors, gas powered or otherwise. These devices are generally regulated under CMC Chapter 10.48, Community Noise Control, which limits the hours of operations for landscape maintenance activities. Now, landscape maintenance activities have been interpreted to include the use of all motorized gardening equipment, and that includes leaf blowers. So although noise limits are set in this chapter, landscape maintenance activities are exempt, provided that reasonable efforts are made to minimize disturbances to nearby residents. And this chapter also includes regulations on operating hours, depending on the time of the day or depending on the time of the day or the week or holidays. And I'll go into that a little more later on. Next, I wanted to present some data on current enforcement of leaf floors. Just to provide some context, noise violations are reported to the code enforcement division. So a review of landscape maintenance related cases within the city over a five-year period from January 2015 to July 2020 yielded 27 complaints and 15 of those which were specific to leaf floor noise and hours of operation. So the remaining 12 cases are non-specific. They could still include leaf blowers, but they can also include other motorized landscaping equipment, such as lawn mowers, edgers and chainsaws. So in aggregate, 10 complaints were related to the use of loud equipment and 22 were related to the use of landscape equipment being used too early in the day. So when considering regulations for leaf blowers, we turn to the surrounding jurisdictions and what their leaf floor regulations are. So in our comparison study, you'll notice that there are a few jurisdictions, such as Palo Alto, Los Altos and Los Gatos, that specifically prohibit gas leaf blowers, while other cities such as Sunnyvale and Saratoga don't specifically prohibit gas powered blowers, but they instead refer to gas or electric blowers that are ANSI certified or equivalent. And the likely reason for the gas ban from some of those jurisdictions is that studies have suggested that electric leaf blowers are generally quieter than gas leaf blowers. One particular study showed that gas powered leaf blowers have a greater low frequency component versus battery electric, which means that it's allowed to transmit and remain audible over longer distances. And the lower frequency means that sounds can travel more readily through windows and glass doors of homes. And an analysis of perceived loudness by the human ear can perceive it up to several times louder than a battery electric counterpart. So overall, suggested that gas blowers can have a greater adverse impact on the surrounding community. And back to the table, with the exception of Los Altos and Los Gatos, gas blowers are allowed in all other non-residential zones. And that's likely to account for the challenges that electric leaf blowers would have on larger commercial and office sites, such as increased maintenance times, restricted mobility for corded electric blowers, inadequate run times for battery operated blowers, et cetera. And finally, the noise, all of the jurisdictions set noise standards for allowable blowers with the norm being 65 decibels measured at 50 feet from the leaf blower. In addition to leaf blower type and decibel levels, we also observed some of the operational hours between the jurisdictions. With Cupertino's operational hours at the bottom for comparison, start times are relatively similar for all days with weekday hours similar to Sunnyvale's, with the exception of reduced hours on weekends and holidays.
And that's for gas or electric, right? The hours?
Correct, yeah, this is for landscape maintenance in general.
Okay.
Well, no, because there are some jurisdictions that don't allow gas leaf blowers, right? So for those, you can't.
So moving on to proposed regulations. So similar to survey jurisdictions, we're proposing setting limits to noise levels at 65 decibels measured at 50 feet from the source and allowing only certified leaf blowers, which we are defining as being ANSI certified and verifiable through manufacturer stickers, such as the one that you could see on the slide. And this is really for ease of identification and enforcement. Additionally, electric leaf blowers that are equivalent in terms of noise level, verified through manufacturer specs would also be allowed. And certified electric blowers will be allowed in all zones, while certified gas blowers will be allowed in all zones except for single family duplexes and triplex developments. And no changes are proposed to the hours of operation. And this table just reflects the proposed standards that I discussed in the previous slide. Just reflected on this table for comparison with the other jurisdictions. And as you can see, they share similarities among other cities, as indicated in the bold text. But the proposed regulations are largely modeled after Palo Alto's regulations in that Palo Alto restricts gas leaf blowers in residential zones, but not in non-residential. So staff reviewed other implementation plans. And we particularly looked at the city of Saratoga's to be ideal in terms of outreach through a grace period and having also been the most recent jurisdiction to adopt leaf floor regulations, when they adopted it back in October 2017 and went into effect just last year, October 2019. So staff is recommending a two-year grace period, same as Saratoga, starting when the ordinance is effective to allow time for residents and landscapers to familiarize themselves with new regulations and acquire the permitted equipment. During this time, staff is also going to develop and carry out an outreach plan. And that includes, is not limited to citywide postcard mailers, notifying local nurseries and landscape companies, putting a notice in the Cupertino scene and creating a FAQ page on the website. I also wanted to mention that during this time, the city will continue to enforce noise violations for landscape maintenance activities under the current community noise control ordinance until the effective date. So this item was heard at the September 22 planning commission hearing. Planning commission received the public comments. They reviewed the ordinance and voted zero to four and one with Sexina absent for the following reasons. First being the lack of necessity for regulations based on the low number of complaints against leaf blowers, approximately three per year since 2015. Difficulties for court enforcement to regulate. Three proposed regulations inequitably harm small business owners. The fourth being proposed regulations do not merit passage and is not worthy of advancing. And five, it's considered overregulation. That said, staff still finds that the project is exempt from CEQA. Section 15061 B3, which can be seen with certainty that the proposed regulation will have no possible significant effect on the environment. And section 15308, which is an item adopted to ensure maintenance, restoration, enhancement or protection of the environment. In terms of public noticing and outreach, a legal ad was placed in the newspaper at least 10 days prior to hearing. A display ad was placed in the newspaper at least 10 days prior to hearing. It was posted on the city's official notice bulletin board four days prior to hearing and posted on the city of Cupertino's website at least four days prior to hearing. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council find that the proposed actions are exempt from CEQA and conduct the first reading and consider adopting the draft ordinance. So that concludes the presentation for leaf floors and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, I don't see any member of the public raising their hand, so. Let's see, we have, yeah, no one's raising their hand. So yeah, let's bring it back to council. I will, I will go. So regarding the number of complaints, you know, I think the issue here is that people are really annoyed with it, but there's a tendency to not want to go through the hassle of calling code enforcement and all. I hear these all the time in my neighborhood and I'm annoyed with it, but you know, it's, by the time code enforcement could come out, they would be gone anyway. So I don't think. So I don't think the low number of complaints is necessarily a reason not to do this. They say that for every person that complains, there's a hundred people that are upset but don't do anything. As regards to small businesses, I think the phase-in is a good idea. It does give gardeners in residential areas the chance to acquire either corded or cordless electric leaf blowers. So those, yeah, those are my thoughts, and I was kind of amazed that we were the only city in that chart that didn't already have some kind of limit on that. So how did that happen that Cupertino is, if you go back to, can you go back to that one chart that you showed? Oh, let's see, can you share your screen again? Okay, yeah, where was the slide that compared? Right, yeah, that one.
So this is the slide that compares jurisdictions and regulations.
Right, so, yeah, we were the only city that didn't have that. I just wonder why we're the only city where they're exempt from noise limits in the municipal code?
Or is it because the cities who don't have it are not listed?
Probably, yeah, that's possible, too.
Do they not have regulations also?
That's correct. There is other neighboring jurisdictions that don't necessarily specify leaf floor restrictions.
So it's only because they listed the ones who have the regulation, right?
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so that's all I have, so if anyone else would like to go, let's try to keep this to five minutes per council member.
Yeah, so, whoops, can you keep that slide up just for a second? You know, Mayor Shar said all the other cities have the ordinance, but what I'm seeing there is Palo Alto prohibited, Sunnyvale allows, Los Altos prohibits, Saratoga allows, and Los Gatos prohibits. So it's not, we're the only one. You know, it's kind of fifty-fifty.
Correct. These other jurisdictions that were surveyed specifically call out the use of leaf blowers. And Palo Alto, Los Altos, and Los Gatos were, you know, specifically evaluated because they prohibited gas leaf blowers.
Could you go back to the Planning Commission reasoning and their vote? So, so it was four to zero to not move forward with this based on these concerns?
Correct.
I just want to be sure, because, you know, zero to four. Lack of necessity, I agree, you know, that they are annoying, but difficulty for code enforcement. I would see the code enforcement, there'd be two, two categories. You know, the number of complaints, and then how often were they actually able to catch the culprit when they got the complaint? Makes it challenging. Harming small business. The one I, I don't see here, but I would have hoped that there would have been a little bit more in their reasoning here. The one that jumps out at me is if, if a gardener, it seems like we could, could go and move forward with something saying that we don't allow gas leaf blowers unless they implement a adequate muffler. And so I'm not seeing that, and that maybe isn't the only possible solution. Was that not, did they not come up with some, some alternatives for the noise? Or were you in attendance to the Planning Commission meeting?
From my recollection, they didn't specifically come up with alternative regulations in terms of, of noise for gas leaf blowers, so no.
Do you think it's possible to implement a muffler? What would do, what would we call that, exception? A muffler exception or something? For the small, single-owner businesses that would then, you know, have to go and buy more equipment?
So.
Let me try and interject here. I'm thinking that the, the noise control versus the DBA on that other slide, Jeff. If you look at controlling the noise levels to the DBA levels that are outlined, then the person or the small business that you're maybe worried about, Councilmember Willie, would deploy whatever solution would get him to that DBA level.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, to remind that the proposed regulations, it's, it's a blanket sixty-five DBA citywide. It's just that gas leaf blowers would be specifically prohibited in residential. But the noise levels for leaf blowers would be consistent in any zoning district.
So even if it was gas below sixty-five, it would still be not, or it would still be prohibited?
In residential zones.
Correct, and that's for the previously mentioned study about the lower frequencies and how much easier it is to, to go through windows and doors.
Okay, that's, that's it for my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Tao.
Um, okay. So, a question. So the single-family homes, a lot of commercial and professional gardeners, they go, they probably need to service multiple homes in a day, right? So how will they be able to operate on the electric gas, gas leaf blower?
So.
Actually, it wouldn't work.
So in residential properties, they would be limited to either the, the corded and then connected to maybe like a generator of some sort, or battery-operated leaf blower?
Will be using gas on their truck to generate electricity, and then what's the point? I thought we are trying to reduce gas use, but if you are.
I think the, yeah, the intent would be for them to use electric leaf blowers in the form of battery-operated.
Because I, the rest, you know, doesn't make sense, because for, I would think a multifamily unit have more capability, especially the new ones to install electric outlets, so that in the future landscaping can all have access to electric outlets. And, and then, but for single-family homes, it's less likely when they are servicing multiple homes, especially older ones to have the outlet available. Some might already have it, some might not. So it seems if you would like to reduce gas use, you should apply that to multifamily units rather than single-family.
I, I mean, I would disagree with that. I mean, I, of my personal experience, I do have a corded electric leaf blower. It's really, you know, it's actually a lot easier not to have to deal with gas and oil and all, and just plug it in. There's plenty of outlets around, you know, the house and the garage or outside, and it's, you know, it's also lighter than a gasoline-powered leaf blower. But yeah, for commercial, it doesn't make sense, because they're big lots.
For professional gardeners, do they usually have access to this electric outlet?
If there's outdoor outlets on those single-family homes, then they would likely use that.
Are we forbidding them to use gas-powered generator to generate electricity?
We did not look into that for, for this item.
And also, I looked into lawnmowers that actually generate ninety decibel of noise. Is, is there any reason people are not complaining about lawnmowers, but then I'm more annoyed by leaf blowers?
Yes. Well, the item specifically was for leaf blowers. You know, if, if that's something.
It seems lawnmowers are a lot more noisier at ninety decibels. And then also, I think, so right now, under landscaping activities, on the noise level for both lawnmower and leaf blower are exempt from the current noise standard. So what's the current noise standard? It's like sixty, right?
Sixty in the daytime, fifty in the evening, so, so pretty much sixty, because they would be operating during daytime.
It's really a difference of five decibels than we are trying to regulate.
That's, that's correct, but under, under the regulations, they're exempt from that noise level with, with the intent being that they, they make every effort to reduce those noise levels with mufflers that they may use or noise bafflers.
So right now, they can go over sixty, and then we are trying to limit at sixty-five.
The way the code reads right now, that's correct.
Okay.
If I can interject, I think the difference with lawnmowers is that the lawnmower engine is very close to the ground, while the leaf blower engine, you're walking around, holding it up higher, and I think the noise transmits further. I mean, ju- just from my own personal experience, a lawnmower is much less annoying than a gas-powered leaf blower. I think it also, maybe the engine is smaller and noisier, but that's, that's just, just my own experience.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, who else wants to go? John?
I, I went right after you.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so Rod.
You know, I'm, I'm happy to take public comment on this before I.
I didn't, there was nobody that raised their hand. Yeah, we only have two attendees at this meeting that I see, and no one has raised their hand. Okay.
Well, fair enough, so, you know, this is kind of small ball. I, I think that this is, this, these gas blowers don't put out more pollution, to my understanding, than lawnmowers. The Air District doesn't consider them an important source to regulate because their emissions are low. I think all things being equal, an electric unit is better, but I, I get the, the issues that come up for, think, think about the fact that, you know, people who are contracting to have land, folks doing, what do you call it, mow and blow, right? Those, those folks are typically, if they can, using gas-powered units, because they're going from home to home to home to home. So they'll, they quickly run out of battery, whereas, you know, if you're doing it yourself, you don't. So I, on this, I, I would go a step beyond the Planning Commission. I don't, I, I do think that the amount of noise these things generate should be limited. There are a number of both gas-powered and lithium, lithium-ion battery-powered units in the sixty to sixty-five decibel range. You know, for, for example, Burlingame has an ordinance based solely on, on noise level, and they list a number of, of units, whether electric or, or gas, that, that, but pretty closely up against the sixty-five decibel level. And to me, that's probably the appropriate thing to do, to just say, look, we, we respect that, you know, gardeners are working at different hours and different places. We don't want to unduly restrict them. But there are plenty of commercial units available that meet the sixty-five DBA standard, and it's on that basis that we're regulating. So I think that's a happy medium perhaps between what staff has arrived at and what the Planning Commission wanted to do, which basically, you know, they said unanimously, this is, this is overregulation, so, okay. But I do think it's, it's quite reasonable and commercially feasible to, to limit these machines to sixty-five. Thanks.
But, but, so you're saying it's fine to keep having the gasoline-powered ones, but not?
I, I think we ought to spend our, frankly, spend our, you know, efforts on, on trying to improve sustainability on things that really matter, and this is, this is small, this is small fry, frankly.
So I just would point out that this was, hadn't, this agenda item actually had nothing to do with greenhouse gas emissions. This was solely about noise.
Yeah, sure.
So what you proposed actually is not unreasonable.
Well, you know, it's, it's because the emissions are very low, and I, you know, just practically recognizing that a lot of, a lot of folks have gas units. The, the thing I, I think, and, and really appreciate, right, is the idea that these things are not, given commercial viability, that these, these units not exceed a certain noise threshold is an appropriate way to regulate. And just keep it really simple. I mean, if, you know, enforcement is going to be tough, if we get to hours and all kinds of complicated things, I think the, you know, there are known models that, that meet the threshold. Trying to regulate everything else just seems like a lot of complication to me for a little benefit, given the number of complaints we really have.
All right, fair enough. Darcy?
Yeah, I mean, I would support the, the staff proposal, their votes for it. So I think taking the table in front of us and adopting the far-right column, that's, that's fine. It sounds like there's at least some kind of majority consensus for that. I mean, for the idea of trying to curb the use of, you know, gas blowers in conjunction with Saratoga's plan to transition it over two years, you know, maybe this is an idea that, 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 that just isn't ripe yet in Cupertino to try to look at that. And, you know, I can accept that, that's, that's totally fine. So, you know, I'll, I'll forego the rest of my comments right now, because I don't really see that. It would be all that productive in terms of, you know, the, the substance of the agenda. So, so I would, I would just support the, the rightmost column, which is putting it on the ANSI methodology and requiring that the, the noise be certified as producing sixty-five decibels or less.
Right, so for residential and all other zones, you would allow gas, but it all has to be sixty-five dB or less?
Yeah, I mean, my, my proposal really would be the staff's recommendation or just an outright ban on, on gas blowers throughout the city. I, I, I thought, you know, and now I'm getting into like the discussion I didn't really want to get into because of, you know, what it looks like, you know, the, the votes are.
Staff recommendation is to ban gas blower in single-family duplex and triplex area.
Yeah, could, yeah, why don't you let Darcy finish?
No, I want to clarify, no.
Well, you, but you're not, you don't have the floor, you know, can you let other people talk? So I, I mean, my, my point is that you've got, you, you've got a bifurcated system of enforcement here, and that would have been part of my questions as well. But in terms of being able to, being able to roll this out over time, you know, what I would have said, if we had more of a, you know, support for the idea is, is basically, it's, it's good to roll it out over time to, to get people to understand what the regulation is. I think it is also good to be able to think about some of the economic consequences and think about what we could be doing, you know. So for instance, the Water District has a, a long conversion rebate that the city at, at times has matched. And so if there was, you know, a future appetite for it, I would encourage coming back and looking at that. If we were to have rolled it out over two years, like Saratoga does, or did rather, you know, looking at, at, at an economic aspect of it as well. um, you know, looking at and and at an economic aspect of it as well. And and I think we're safe to talk about that because, um, you know, I I I understand that you don't really want to look at, you know, the 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 pollution and the emissions uh, aspect of it because that's not really within our purview to regulate. Um, but, you know, if it happens to to help, then then then, you know, all the better. I mean, personally, I tend to think that that these two stroke engines are are quite polluting, you know, frankly, if you look at countries where um, there is a lot of two stroke, um, you know, uh, you know, uh, in engines being used such as, you know, uh, well, it's just countries around the world. The those are where the the soot tends to be the the greatest and you know, I I I think that there's something to be said for that, but in terms of the economic rollout, a lot of these plans, you know, irrespective of what issue you're looking at, what they tend to ignore are the are the financial feasibilities. And because this is a relatively smaller sector, it's something that I think is a lot easier to to handle on a a jurisdictional basis uh, for a smaller city such as ours. And if we were to, you know, start doing something like that and think about the economic realities and what we can be doing to kind of, you know, transition, uh, not just in terms of notice to the um, applicable but financial feasibilities, I think we would see a lot of our other types of policies be more effectively implemented over time. And and I'm not just talking about Cupertino. I mean, you know, much more wide ranging social, you know, issues. But I mean, all that being said, you know, I will support the the noise aspect of this on the right hand column. And um, with your leave mayor, I would like to bring a motion to that.
Okay, yeah, I think, right, I think what council member Chow thought you were supporting the whole uh, bottom line when actually it's only the the bottom right.
And frankly, you know.
That's fine.
People in the middle of their comments, you know, I would expect the same.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, go ahead and bring the motion then.
Okay, I'll 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 bring uh, the motion that uh, we uh, support the staff recommendation with the modification that there is no um, prohibition of gas blowers uh, in in the proposed ordinance.
All right, I'll second it. Kirsten, you're muted.
Sorry, I have a duck, uh, barking dog. Um, would you like me to, okay, well, first, uh, I'll take the vote and then would you like me to read the title of the ordinance?
Yeah.
Well, and and just to clarify, and um, I'd ask for planning staff support here. I think we would need to modify the ordinance and come back for another first reading then, because this is more than we could adjust on the fly, but I'm seeing.
Really?
If I may, I I I actually have a suggestion um, to show on the screen what what we could strike out, which wouldn't this uh, adoptable tonight.
And would we, I'm, I'm sorry, there's a little side conversation here, but um, Pew should, I I'm thinking about the findings as well.
Okay.
Um, and if we want, we could sort of huddle a little bit and try to look at that um, quickly, or we could, we could bring back uh, another first reading.
Yeah, let let's just bring it back and move the meeting forward.
Well, if, I mean, if you can do it in five minutes, it'd be nice to be done.
Yeah, we could take, yeah, that's a good point, right? We can take a five minute break and.
Yeah, a nature break.
Right, it's almost time for a break anyway, so.
Good.
Did we vote first?
No, no, they have to uh, they have to change a few things, I think, is the point.
Yeah, we we'd be, we'd we'd try to see if we can modify the ordinance now that you would then do the first reading of or we'd modify the draft ordinance, so then you could do the first reading of the modified draft ordinance.
Okay.
At this.
Is five, is five minutes enough?
Five minutes or seven minutes or?
I honestly don't know. So probably, let's do seven, that'd be great.
All right, let's come back at eight twenty-five. I just said seven, because then it would be eight twenty-five.
Oh, I see, I see your point, Council. Do you want a straw vote to see if?
Confirmed, we all support. I think we all do. I think we should first confirm that and then the staff do the modification.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I think I think that's pretty clear.
Yeah, I think we all support it. I said, I'll I'll support it. That's three right there.
See you in seven.
We we just need to vote, right?
Okay, we'll see you at eight twenty-five.
Yeah, I mean, one, I'm sorry, one more thing. I I would support it as well, even with an additional provision that if you can't figure it out in seven minutes, you know, anything that you need to do in order to bring the findings, um, you know, up to uh, consistency with our our primary motion. Uh, just bring it and modify it for the second reading. I I I would, I would suggest something like that.
If if that's possible, yeah, thanks.
We did.
Can you, you can't go, can you do full screen?
Uh, yes, or I could zoom in at least. Let's see.
Okay, that's good.
All right. Uh, so we have amended some of the proposed language, uh, pretty much to read after November fifth, twenty twenty-two. The use of any leaf blower other than a certified leaf blower is prohibited and shall be used in a manner consistent with section ten point forty-eight oh eight oh A and B.
And you specify what certified means somewhere there, right?
Yes, correct. Uh, let's see, the definition for certified leaf blower, um, any uh, leaf blower with a noise level reading of sixty-five DB or less, fifty feet from the source.
And there was one small edit to the finding, too.
Yes, um, to uh, finding E um, that the proposed zoning is not detrimental to health, safety, peace, morals, and general welfare persons uh, residing and working in the neighborhood, uh, struck out the types um, in regards to leaf blowers to only um, mention providing regulations on the usage um, of leaf blowers within these neighborhoods.
Did that read usage of leaf blowers, or, okay? I don't know about the morals part either, frankly.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, too.
Health, safety, peace, morals, and general welfare, huh? I suppose there's a reason for that being in there, but uh.
It just tracks the language of our statute.
Okay.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay, so.
Can I remake the motion?
Just right, make the motion to conduct, okay.
Okay, um, I move that we find that the proposed action is exempt from SEQA, uh, and I move that following city clerk's first or reading of ordinance number uh, twenty dash two two one three, as modified by staff um, that we um, uh, constitute the first reading thereof, um. I'm sorry, let me, let me redo that. That was very bad. Okay, I move that um, city council find that the proposed action is exempt from SEQA and that city council conduct the first reading of ordinance number two zero dash two two one three as modified by staff.
Great, I'll second that.
This is the first reading of ordinance number two zero dash two two one three and ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino amending chapter ten point four eight, community noise control for leaf blower regulations. And I will proceed with the vote, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful.
Council member Chow?
Aye.
Council member Sinks?
Yes.
Council member Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. All right, we are on to item eleven, which is minor cleanup amendments to the Cupertino municipal code. Uh, do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members, Katie, our assistant to the city manager. I will be sharing a presentation. Great. Can everybody see the presentation? I will assume so.
Yes.
Yes.
So periodically, awesome, thank you. Um, periodically cities go through uh, cleanups and minor amendments to the municipal code to bring everything in line with any uh, state law or current city practices, or possibly to um, just minor amendments that will make processes uh, run more smoothly in operations and more efficiently. And so the amendments brought to you tonight are meant to be controversial changes. However, if the council wishes, um, any items can be brought back for a more robust discussion. So first we have cancellation of regular council meetings. Currently, there is no formal method in the municipal code to cancel a meeting. Uh, as of right now, when council votes to cancel a meeting, the clerk must stand outside of the city.
Trouble hearing you.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Community hall. And I meet in person.
Katie, you're, Katie, we, you're breaking up.
You may want to close your video, Katie.
Can you hear me?
We can now, but you were starting to freeze and your audio was bad, so you may want to just.
Sorry, my internet appears unstable.
Yeah, so close your screen for a little more bandwidth.
Yeah.
See if that helps.
Hopefully that worked today. And the second amendment, or do you want me to run through that again? Essentially, there is no formal method for council meetings except for by a formal vote. Uh, currently, someone must stand outside of community halls to adjourn the meeting at six forty-five the day of. Um, so this would clean up that process. Uh, the second amendment is about city managers' power to decide purchase orders, contracts, conveyances, and other instruments. Right now, uh, government code provides that the mayor signs for these unless another designee is authorized. This amendment will clarify that the city manager may sign these types of documents, assuming the council uh, has approved that their execution by the city manager. It also provides that purchasing, the purchasing officer, as provided in the municipal code, may not only approve an award, but also sign for those documents. So the authority is already there. It's just clarifying that they may also sign the actual document. Service animals in city buildings. Currently, um, we allow guide dogs, um, but this amendment would broaden that to allow um, service animals in our public facilities in conformance of Americans with Disabilities Act. Next, we have bicycle licensing and registration. This is a very antiquated program that is no longer in existence, and so we are proposing to remove this from the municipal code. Uh, it require, it currently requires that bicycles have a license and registration. Uh, but this is not implemented, and the original intent was to aid law enforcement in the recovery of lost or stolen bicycles. And that is not what they actually use. They actually use online registries, so that's, that was the preferred way to accomplish the same goal. And lastly, we have allow city sponsored programs during park curfew hours. Um, so some occasionally, as you may know, uh, Cupertino may hold. So some occasionally, as you may know, uh, Cupertino may hold official programming such as the Cupertino campout that occurs overnight at a park. And would be in violation of curfew hours, so this proposed amendment would allow the director of parks and recreation to. To waive that uh, park curfew. For that particular city sanctioned event.
Katie. That audio is not, not so good, so um.
So again, we would recommend. Uh, seem to be. Where did I get cut off?
Well, you know what, we can read this too, so you don't have to, you don't have to read it all to us, just give us a second. Okay.
Okay.
So is this your last slide?
Yeah, uh, this is essentially the recommended action, that's what the packet, it's adopting and conducting the first reading of the ordinance. Uh, however, there, if there are any sections that the council wishes to bring back at a future meeting, we can do that.
All right, great, is there any discussion on any of this? Does that just? Go ahead, Liang.
So, uh, first, I hope that for the future meeting, we have a little more descriptive uh, title for the agenda. Because right now it just says cleanup of municipal code, which could mean anything. So it would be better if we list out exactly. What we are changing, at least some short description. And I know right now it's in the recommended action, um, it's better it's in the title. And then um, my main thing would be the park curfew, I know that the campout is. Wildly popular, but because it's wildly popular. There, it will have impact on the immediate neighbors. And so do we have, I don't think we have currently any notification requirement. When they should be notified and what's the radius of notification, maybe that should be considered. In the municipal code to in case. Any campout, maybe a boy scout can do a campout at one of the park. So.
Joanne, can you um, address council member Chow's question slash comment?
Absolutely. Good evening, my name's Joanne McGrany, I'm the director of Parks and Recreation. Um, my understanding, I've been here for a little over four months, but um, like you were saying, council member Chow, it is a wildly popular event, um, the campout. Uh, there is a notification um, for uh, each season that goes out about all the events that are happening. In the parks, um, including the Cupertino campout and events that happen at Memorial Park. Um, there are door hangers that are placed um, out at the neighboring um, streets. Um, and so there is a notification.
I know, but it's not in the municipal code, it's just we are doing that specifically for the citywide campout. It's a good thing we do, and, but if we are changing the municipal code to allow. Um, a waiver of the curfew, then maybe the, the code should also include. Um, notification, neighborhood notification. So.
Uh, I don't think the purpose of the curfew was. For this, the purpose of the curfew was to not have young people out late at night, it wasn't um, in terms of reducing. Noise in the neighborhood, which is already covered by the noise ordinance. So I.
Will have a waiver on the noise ordinance, right? So there could be movie sounds from, from movies after ten o'clock. Because movie a lot of times starts at like nine thirty when it gets dark.
Actually, um, if I could just interject, um, our movies start um, well before uh, nine o'clock, actually, they're, they're usually finished by ten PM. Um, there may be some cleanup that occurs, um, you know, at, a little after ten, but normally all of our uh, movies in the park, concerts in the park, Shakespeare in the park. Those, all of those events end prior to ten PM.
Okay, then that should be okay, I'm just concerned if a neighbor also have a party and they expect to have some quietness after ten, I don't know. So then they might interfere with their plan, they might want to be notified, oh, they can change their date of their party. Yeah.
Oh, I think we're overthinking this, but anyway.
Okay.
Um, anyone else want to comment on these?
I'll just say, I think these are uh, appropriate. And minor changes to code that I, I support, all of them.
Great, okay, me too, John.
So, yeah, I, I would simply say that I also share a little concern about the houses directly adjacent. Notification wo- would be good, I, I'm okay with letting it go like it is. And then if, you know, if there were some residents that uh, found uh, that they, they were disturbed by it. Then hopefully uh, Parks and Rec would come back and let us know and we could uh, you know, institute some type of. Notification, whether it's a localized street or something as opposed to a more broad based one, so. I'd say let's go ahead and move forward with these changes, yeah.
Okay.
Great, Darcy, do you have anything?
No, I, I agree with the changes, thanks.
Okay, wonderful. So. Let's see, where are we? So um, Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the first reading of ordinance number two, zero, two, two, one, four?
Certainly, and I just want to comment, Mr. Mayor, I know you've already looked, but there are no speakers for public comment.
Right, okay.
This is the first reading of ordinance number two, zero dash two, two, one, four, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino. Mending Cupertino municipal code, section two point zero four point zero one zero concerning regular meetings of the city council. Section two point two eight point zero four zero concerning powers and duties of the city manager. Section eight point zero one point zero nine zero concerning animals and city buildings. Chapter eleven point zero eight concerning bicycle licensing and registration. And section thirteen point zero four point one nine zero concerning activities prohibited in city parks.
Great, okay. All right, so um, can we? Can we have a vote on this then?
I'll, I'll move the first reading.
Okay, oh, right, okay, I'll second.
Council member Chow.
Aye.
Council member Sinks.
Yes.
Council member Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Sharp.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, we're on to item twelve, update Cupertino's annual minimum wage with an ordinance for a one-time adjustment. To the city of Cupertino, a minimum wage to be consistent with the cities of. Los Altos, Palo Alto, and Santa Clara, such that the minimum wage. Will be consistent among those cities in the city of Cupertino in twenty twenty one. And subsequent years to achieve a desired uniformity among the cities of Los Altos, Palo Alto, and Santa Clara. So can we have our staff report?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor, and council members, Angela Sway, Economic Development Manager. Uh, I do have a brief presentation to share.
Great.
And I will. Begin that. So I'll start off with a very brief background, um, as you may recall, April twenty sixteen, Governor Brown signed. A minimum wage law SB three, um, with the intent for the state minimum wage to reach fifteen dollars by twenty twenty two. Of, and recognizing that the Silicon Valley of. Cost of living is much higher, uh, the city's association recommended um, a more, much more accelerated schedule for um, to reach fifteen dollars by twenty nineteen. And partially those key findings in the economic um, analysis indicated the increase would help uh, low wage workers and their families. In twenty sixteen, city council approved the ordinance and the minimum wage was set um, for twelve dollars in twenty seventeen. With the intent to reach fifteen dollars uh, by twenty nineteen, and so this is the rate schedule. At that time, other South Bay cities adopted similar ordinances. Cupertino, along with the neighboring cities of Los Altos, Palo Alto, and Santa Clara. Established uh, similar minimum wage rates at twenty seventeen and um, was on, they were on the same acceleration schedule. So the annual just, adjustment amounts for the four cities of, were the same for the s- years of twenty seventeen, eighteen, and twenty nineteen. However, uh, Cupertino's minimum wage did diverge in twenty twenty uh, due to a calculation difference, and it was a five cent difference at that point. Uh, this is just an excerpt of our current ordinance, we can. Refer to that later if you'd like, uh, this is just a snapshot of the current year's. Minimum wage rates uh, for the cities in Santa Clara County. And you can see currently Cupertino is at fifteen thirty five of five cents less than the cities of Los Altos. Uh, Palo Alto and Santa Clara, although we had begun on the same schedule in twenty seventeen. And then this is a partial list, um, expected rate changes for twenty twenty one, and it's a partial list because these are the cities that have confirmed. Their new rates for twenty twenty one. And so you can see here that uh, again, the, our amount will have a greater difference uh, between the other three cities that we were in line with. And then you can also see the other rate, uh, this rates for the other cities. And if, or there is no true-up adjustment, um, then Cupertino's twenty twenty one minimum wage rate will be fifteen dollars and sixty cents. For the upcoming year. Uh, so the recommended action um, is to conduct the first reading of this ordinance. Uh, again, it's, this is for a one-time true-up of, for a twenty twenty one minimum. Wage of fifteen dollars and sixty five cents an hour. And that is my presentation, I am happy to answer any questions.
Great, all right, thank you, so how many businesses are. Paying uh, the minimum wage that this would affect, uh, we have any idea? I mean, I see a lot of businesses are already, you know, way above this for entry-level jobs.
Unfortunately, I do not have any recent um, data, there was some analysis done uh, when the city associations. Uh, reached out to us in twenty fifteen uh, with this idea of this higher or more accelerated uh. Wage, um, so unfortunately, I do not have that um, data in front of me.
Yeah, and how did we end up so much less than Sunnyvale and Mountain View?
They accelerated their schedule a year ahead of the other cities. So if you recall, yeah, back in twenty fourteen, they were actually um, at a higher rate than all the other Silicon Valley cities.
Okay, and then how do, how do our small businesses feel about this?
So we did not do an extensive outreach in regards to um, the true-up because. Our ordinance does annually have this adjustment. Um, so in October, we send out the notification mailings notifying businesses what the new minimum wage would be. Um, and again, the ordinance states that every year, um, it will be calculated and there will be adjustments.
Great, okay, that's all I have, everyone, anyone else?
Could, could we just go back to the original rate increase schedule for Cupertino? That you showed, it kind of went through it fairly quick, it kind of looked uh, pretty decent to what we originally came up with.
Sure, let me go ahead and uh, share my screen again. So the original, oh.
Yeah, right before that one. There, there you go.
Yes, so this is actually posted, um, so we posted this in twenty seventeen, this was the um. What we assumed would be kind of the schedule, estimated schedule. So we actually are not far off.
Yeah, we're not far off, and it actually looks pretty good, you know, twenty twenty one, fifteen sixty five, twenty twenty two, sixteen, sixteen dollars, then sixteen forty. Well, you know, I mean, I, I think those are. Pretty, pretty good uh, increasing. And so I, I kind of like this, now we go, we true-up. Early, so the twenty twenty is fifteen forty. And then are you going to true-up all the other ones too, or?
No, so it, it would just be a one-time true-up for twenty twenty one to be fifteen sixty five. And then um, of course, the CPI will adjust, i- it depends on, you know, what the difference is from the previous year. Um, but this is just asking for a one-time true-up of, again, to be in line with um, uh, the three other cities we kind of had started our path with.
But this was your, this was the original expectation for, uh, except you've got the stars by twenty twenty one, two, and three. But this was the original expectation for our increasing our minimum wage.
Correct. Uh, and again, just, those were based on the historical CPI, um, and it was a two point two percent change, um, I believe. From this year, the um, change is closer to one point five one, I, I have the exact. Amount, but yes, the estimated a few years ago was kind of on this track at two point two percent, and that's how we. Came to these estimated um, wages.
Cause the, the change from seventeen to eighteen, you know, wow, a, a buck and a half an hour in just one year. And then it uh, you know, kind of reverts to a gradual. Reasonable uh, increase, and when I say reasonable, you know, I'm kind of thinking about uh, you know, Thirty One Flavors and some of these other. Uh, smaller places that truly are going to be using high school students and paying minimum wage. And so uh, they would be the ones that I think would be most concerned. But the fact that we're not varying much from, from this uh, chart, I would say that that seems pretty reasonable. When you showed the one with all the cities, it, it appears that, you know, Campbell is still down in the twelve dollar range.
Correct, so this is the current year.
Twenty-five or less employees, twelve, twelve dollars a year. Well, yeah, that sounds, sounds low, but then again, um, high school students on just work experience. Wow, twelve dollars an hour would sound pretty good to them, but um, yeah, so, okay, that's my comments. I'll listen to the other council.
Hey, anyone else, uh, Liang?
So, for any business, if they are competing with other cities, they. They can always pay a higher amount to match what other cities are paying, right?
Uh, yes.
Or maybe if it's an employment area that's in high demand, then the minimum wage really doesn't matter. It's more like, when like John said, it's high schoolers, where um, you have more people, more employers, but less number of jobs. That's where the minimum um, kicks in.
The only one challenge I, uh, to address your um, question is. For national chains, I think it's more difficult for them to be able to pay more than the city's minimum wage. Uh, just because of, you know, corporate uh, decisions or, or whatnot. For an independent employer, it, it probably is much easier for them to adjust up or down, uh, up above the minimum wage. Uh, but for national chains or franchises, it, it may be more difficult for them.
So, we, have we reached out for, to, for example, school district or. People who are providing like catering services, probably not right now then, and to, I mean, would this affect them more?
Of, all businesses, they, they should realize that with our ordinance that there is an increase in the minimum wage. Uh, we did have this schedule as um, council member Willie had pointed out that these were our estimates, so we would actually be. In line with our estimates from a few years ago, uh, but we did not do any um, notification of this true-up. Uh, but again, most employers realize that they would be paying an increase for the upcoming year in the minimum wage.
I think the case should become, like if you have a, a chain that's both in, has a store.
I think the case becomes, like, if you have a, a chain that's both in, has a store both in Cupertino and, say, Sunnyvale, which is right across the border, you would have employees preferring to work in Sunnyvale rather than Cupertino. So really, the, the business would be, it would be difficult. I'm asking a question, Angela, if you've run into that situation.
Yes, in fact, there, there has, oh, excuse me?
San Jose is paying lower, so they have this difference between cities.
Uh, but in our situation, one um situation that I know of, uh, if you recall, the Rubio's that was um formerly at the Crossroads, Cupertino Crossroads Shopping Center. Uh, they had two locations near my, uh, one in Cupertino and one um in, in a neighboring city, and the other city was paying more. So in fact, all of their employees had asked to be transferred to that other location. Um, and, and I know this because there, there was one day we were actually placing an order and calling and the manager um had said none of her employees were, were working at that Cupertino location because they had all left for the other location. So uh.
We are not limiting them at the minimum age rate, which, right? They are free to pay more to match other branches. It's their choice. They choose not to match the other wages. That's not our problem.
Uh, correct, but for some franchisees um and national chains, they are unable um their headquarters, I, I believe, won't let them pay more than what the area minimum wage is.
Oh, their franchise won't let them pay more.
Correct. I, I think it's um easier for independent uh businesses, but for franchisees and for national chains, there's a difficulty in uh the local manager asking, you know, to be able to ha- pay at a higher rate.
Interesting. Okay.
All right.
It's just businesses are suffering now, so I'm a little concerned how much really this affects small business. Yeah.
Right. Um, anyone else? Rod, do you have anything? Did I already ask you? I can't remember.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll uh weigh in here. I was um part of the city's association task force. So I worked with both business and, and labor groups when we put this together and we attempted to uh find a solution that would work for most cities in the county. San Jose's a little, was a little slow as they, they are known to be on things uh at times. Uh, um, Sunnyvale and Mountain View were a little ahead. These things hold up, but I do think that the staff proposal is a good one. We're talking about a nickel here uh in, in adjustment. And I think being as consistent as we can with the, the majority of of the other cities is just good, um, good policy. Um, we're, we're competing for essentially the same labor pool. Uh, I, I, I know that looking at uh service jobs, um, you know, in the last several years, uh, the, the service jobs are actually paying higher than minimum wage. I don't know what actually the situation is right now with the pandemic, but um, to, to actually bring those folks in, uh, uh, the ser- service jobs um were, you can see this in the signs that were out. They were paying a little bit more than minimum wage. But I think this, this helps level the, the playing field by bringing everybody up to that uh to, to the minimum. And I think this regional approach is the right idea, so I'm supportive of the staff.
Right. And just to make it clear, the minimum wage does not apply to city council members. You know, we are still gonna get paid ten cents an hour.
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I like that. Yeah. Well, it depends on how much longer the meeting goes, I guess. Our rate's going down by the minute here.
Okay, so with that, um, let's see.
Darcy.
Well, oh, Darcy, did you not go? I'm sorry.
No, I, I have no comments on this.
All right.
You know, half the counties have it lower, you know, we have it higher.
Yeah, okay.
We might as well match.
Can I ask the question, uh, how come we are not matching Mountain View? I mean, from the other point of view, we're not really matching Mountain View and Sunnyville, right? Is there, what was the concern there? It's also we don't want to go too high.
Well, they got ahead of us and the rest of us wanted a little bit more moderate stance, recognizing that we were sitting between them and San Jose, frankly. You can see San Jose is still lagging. And yes, Mountain View and Sunnyvale are a little higher. Um, so, I mean, that's my perspective. I haven't worked on this.
Okay, great. So Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the first reading of ordinance number twenty dash twenty-two fifteen?
This is the first reading of ordinance number two zero dash two-two-one-five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino to set minimum wage for twenty twenty-one at fifteen dollars and sixty-five cents per hour.
Okay, I will move this.
Um.
For a second. Okay, great.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Nice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, wonderful. We are on to, well, I guess there's no more oral communications. Uh, no one has their hand raised, so we will move on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. Any staff comments?
Just a question. Did you want um a future report on some of the VTA happenings? Uh, per your kind of question and discussion earlier on in the meeting?
Uh, yeah, if uh the staff has any more information that wasn't presented already. Um.
Uh, I sure, I surely would. I think, um, you know, this is gonna be an, an ongoing discussion. And I think in order to, I don't know when this is actually gonna come up for a vote at the board, but I think our best chance of ensuring that our interests are represented is to, for staff to track this closely. And then for us at the right time, whenever that is, to make sure we are uh in alliance with uh, with other cities whose, whose interests would also be adversely affected. And in that, I would include all the people that we neglect, we got in our coalition uh for measure B in twenty sixteen, right? All of the cities to the west and north of um of uh San Jose ought to have a big interest in this. There are grade separations, for example, for Caltrain in Palo Alto, Mountain View, uh, Sunnyvale. Um, all the cities along the eighty-five corridor, all would, all these projects would be uh greatly impacted, as with the money that we, half of the money we got for roads, if the proposal is, is what we've heard it to be.
So we'll bring.
I'd appreciate it, yeah.
We'll, we'll bring forward a, a, a update periodically uh and um.
Thank you.
A summary um here pretty soon.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any other staff comments before we go to council comments? Okay, council comments and future agenda items. Anybody? John?
Okay, so a couple of different ones, but the, the first one fairly minor, but we, we've had multiple emails about, you know, a homeowner on San Felipe Road uh wanting an ADU unit. And so, you know, do, do we need to do something here? I mean, why is it that they keep asking? And uh it appears that uh their request for an ADU is, is not being looked at.
It is being looked at. The zoning in that area does not allow a third story, which is what the ADU in their location would constitute. So, so council would have to const- contemplate a zoning change for that area. You know, I, I can answer, but they've been working with um one of our planners and that's what.
Okay, cause I'm just a little puzzled why they've emailed us multiple times.
I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, so then on to the other one. Um, the uh other one kind of small, you know, this campaign sign. I, you know, I know we're gonna have a uh, a sign ordinance coming back to us. But I really think, you know, that this campaign sign uh in public right-of-ways has gotten out of line. For candidates that want to adhere to the rules, they're penalized because the candidates that could care less spread their signs all through the community. And while I've brought it up with the city manager, it's, well, it's only when somebody complains and then it's a twenty-four-hour waiting period.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. And I mean, I, I'm looking at the same signs weeks after weeks. And so I'd really like, you know, the sign ordinance to uh come to us so that we could be equitable. We should not be uh penalizing people that want to uh stick with the rules of the community when the others have, have no uh hesitation in violation. I, I think we need that to come back to us so that we can say, hey, if it's, if it doesn't meet the, the rules, it can be taken. So bring it to us. So does anybody support that?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I kind of don't like the idea that an illegally placed sign um code enforcement has to wait before they remove it. Uh, how many, they have to give them how many, how much notice, Deb?
Basically, two days. They've got two days to remove it. And if they don't remove it, then on the third day we go. But part of that time is used with code enforcement. You know, oftentimes we get a complaint and we get this vague description of location. So then we kind of have to go to the area and do our research and then, you know, ensure that we understand exactly what that property is. Is it public property? Is it private property? Is it public but privately owned? And so there's, you know, complicated land ownership in the city.
Yeah, but, but I think the other thing, code enforcement noticed this illegal signs, even if there's no complaint. I think right now they can't do anything. Is that true?
Correct. It has to be complaint-based. And I think we are working on the signed ordinance as well, so we, we don't have a problem bringing that back to council. It will come.
Okay, yeah, I would certainly, you know, agree with John on that. Um, and, and I know election's kind of unusual in the situation that we're facing as well, the.
Yeah, that's true.
I kind of am, I think if it's not complaint-based, the, it's un- un- clear, clear where the city staff might happen to be, right? And then we, city might be accused of, of being unfair because staff just did, had, didn't visit certain area of the city. But probably goes through a certain area of the city more often, but then might be seen as unfair.
Yeah, that's.
And I think we've reached a brief discussion here, and so the focus should be on whether to place this on the agenda.
Okay, right. So we can place that on the agenda. Um.
Okay, so if I can still uh move on, and that is, you know, the, the uh, the Lehigh, the quarry, you know, w- we're getting a lot of uh emails from residents. I mean, Rhoda spoke here tonight. And so I, I'd like to toss out for potentially bringing in an agenda item that we clearly look into uh annexing the quarry so that we truly can uh do more oversight. They're gonna open up another pit if, you know, if, if they get their way. And we're gonna be at the mercy of, of whatever's going on without being able to stand up for our residents and say that we are doing what we can. So I'd like to suggest that we bring an agenda item to uh seriously look at annexing uh that area.
So, yeah, well, we've looked at that before. It's not, it's not possible, but um, it's not something.
My, my office gave a presentation a couple of years ago and we could maybe forward that to you, Councilmember Willie, if you want to review the.
It's not up to us to annex something. The place for annexing has to be willing to be annexed.
And county is getting a lot of tax, so they might not want to annex.
Well, I, I think I saw, you know, somebody forwarded me a letter from Lafco uh that was pre-us, but it was forwarded since I've been on the city council that showed a letter for Lafco uh asking Cupertino if they would like to annex. I, I mean, try and find that letter. I mean, it's, it's, you know, a year and a half ago.
Heather will send you what, what she has. You might not have been on the council when that was.
Well.
And I'll look for it too.
So I, I appreciate Councilmember Willie's um intentions here, and I do think uh this is an issue. We, we had big meetings uh in the last eighteen months when all this truck stuff started happening. I think what could make sense is for the council to consider uh a study session, right, in which we, we could talk about this, although yes, it seems unlikely, but just talk about the actions. Publicly share the actions that um our, our legal experts have been taking to um to, to see what can be done uh about what, what's the current state of the, you know, the, the, the um the applications that have been filed recently. Um, be able to uh air that publicly and have um, yeah, have our, our attorneys explain how they've been advocating for, for half of our residents with the county. That could be a study session or, or it could be a public meeting. I don't know.
Yeah, I think it is time for another one of those. It has been a while.
So just for clarification, uh, most of the actions and emails recently have been on Stevens Creek Quarry because the um county was taking some action. We had sent a letter to the county. It was Stevens Creek. And it is thought that based upon the notice of preparation, likely there's going to be a fully public meeting needed in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one. So I'm just gonna suggest.
Who would run that? Who would run that and control that meeting?
We would kind of, uh, my, my vision would be something very similar to what we did with um, we did an air district one, but we also had a uh meeting on Lehigh last year that was community-based at the senior center where we kind of facilitated it and the county was there. Um.
Well, the, the county was kind of shy, but I think as pointed out, the, the new planning director may have
Yeah.
maybe more forthcoming.
Maybe a little.
I don't, I mean, I'm with John in, in having a real interest in this topic, and I just say, you know, the, the good news about Shoot Mahali is they have long, uh, they have long and deep experience in uh SMARA, the State Mining and Reclamation Act. Uh, they understand this better than anybody on, on the, the side of, of communities. Uh, and um, you know, I think uh we are fortunate to have uh retain, happened to have retained that firm for our, for our city's legal services because they have long and deep experience in this. And I, I, I mean, for my part, I'd be happy if the city manager and the city attorney's office went and figured out what would be effective, um, rather than trying to specify.
So something, something having to do with the.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to have um to, to be able to lay it out for, for members of the public, explain what's been going on, explain what's going on, not only with Lehigh, but Stevens Creek Quarry. The idea that the Stevens Creek Quarry would like to expand and use territory in, in the Lehigh area, right? Uh, all of this stuff um to ex- expand their uses and so forth. And I realize at some point it gets very like technical and legal. Um, so we'd wanna make it palatable, but I, I do think it's time that we had a public um public, some discussion that the public can do that, that explains what our understanding is of, of what's in process.
And, and with that, do you envision something, I'm sorry to be so particular about it, knowing that we'll probably be doing something based upon this next notice in the first quarter as a public thing? Did you want something ahead of that? What, something to accomplish?
I don't know, John. I, if you have any thoughts, um, I don't want to own this altogether, but.
Yeah, um, at least my thought would be that uh having something before that so-called big day, you know, in the next year, where we kind of know in advance, you know, because when we're at that im- all-important meeting and we're hearing things for the first time and then trying to, to scratch our head and say, gee whiz, uh, why didn't we think about this or think about that? As opposed to doing the advanced work and being able to, you know, speak up and say, hey, we, we feel we will, we should be able to limit the amount of truck traffic. We should be able to, to limit these other things and be able to voice it at that meeting, maybe in unison that it's the city council. Um, you know, we've had a chance to mull it over and come up with, with a position and, and have something more to say than to just be uh hearing about it, so.
Okay, we'll, we'll figure something out. So I have, I have two for something about the quarries prior to a public forum is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think we also need an earlier notification for the community. They can get organized and maybe we can together start. They can get organized and maybe we can together study and discover issues if we ever want to consider annexing. We need something to negotiate with.
Yeah, I think we, we, we don't want to wait until the county ha- is eminently going to issue a ruling or something, right? We need enough time to have influence over the planning department.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. Good idea, John.
Wow, anybody else with a future agenda item? Okay, seeing no one. It's nine fifteen. Um, wow.
Too early.
Adjourned.
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 Good night.
D minus three.
Wow.
Aren't you gonna use your, your gavel, Mayor?
Oh, I don't have it here.
He doesn't have the travel gavel.
Okay, good night.
Good night.